This conference will now be recorded.
There we go, alrighty. Good evening, everybody. So, uh, call into order this 13th August 2024, meeting of the King George County Planning Commission. For the record, we do have a quorum. Uh, for those who can, I'll ask you to please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
By our heads. Hallel, Father, we thank you for the day, dear Lord. We thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us. Dear Lord, we ask that you continue to watch over us, dear Lord. We ask that you give us clear minds and hearts as we go about the county's business, deeds, and other blessings. We pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Alright, at this point in our agenda, we will open up the floor for general public comment. Um, and we just ask that as you approach the mic or speak, that you state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, and if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, please come forward. And if there is not, I will defer to Mr. Dines to see if we have been got anyone out online who would like to speak.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dines. Alright, um, as there was no public comment, there's no need for a discussion on public comment, which moves us to our next agenda item, which is approval of the meeting minutes. Uh, we will start with 14 May 2024, which I know has been a little while, but I'll ask if anybody has any questions, comments, concerns about the, uh, content of those meeting minutes, please tell us what page it is and what the correction is, and we will mark those for the record and correct them accordingly.
Mr. Chairman, as I talked to you before, I don't have any specific, uh, concerns with the minutes, but I'd, I'd like to just, uh, ask a question about how accurate the minutes really need to be. I know with my West Virginia accent, possibly, my grammar is a little hard to, to follow sometimes, but I read through the minutes and it's not just me. There's an awful lot of things in these transcriptions that just, it's not even an English sentence. So, from a quality control, does that matter? Do we need to have truly an accurate measurement? There's a lot of comments in there about inaudible discussion. I, I don't know how precise, I'm kind of the, you know, one of, I used to be one of the younger members here on the panel. Um, and I just wonder about the legalities of how accurate those minutes really need to be when we're going through the formal process of approving.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Planning Commission Matt Smolik, your county administrator. So, th- this question has come up, uh, over the last couple of weeks amongst staff also. Question is, Matt, what are, what are boards looking for as far as, do they want verbatim minutes, or do you want action minutes? I thi- I think that's the question that you're asking. So, this is my fourth locality I've worked in from a, from a legal standpoint. I don't have a JD after my name, but legally, you, you can do, you know, action minutes summarizing. It does not need to be verbatim. It is my understanding in my 11 weeks here in King George County that we send the, the meetings off to a, is a transcription company, and tha- and that's how they are derived. If the Planning Commission would like to go away from the verbatim and more of a summary, uh, let us know and, and we can work on that. It's, it's, it's really up the, up to the Planning Commission. But legally, I, I've seen it both ways.
So legally, if we're capturing the spirit and, and intent, we should be okay? Is that?
In, in my 21 years of local government at the Planning Commission, this is the first locality I've ever seen verbatim minutes.
Yeah, I would actually prefer that we provide more of a summarized set of actions and discussions rather than 40 pages of verbatim.
At least not bind ourselves upfront to saying that what we said was verbatim, right? I didn't say that, but it slipped through the minutes, right? Uh, so yes, I, I definitely prefer a kind of a summary type of
Yes.
description of it.
And, and I think-
The way we cla- in other words, the way we categorize the, the minutes is, this is an ac- a true and accurate summary of what was said and-
Concur. That's what I would prefer.
And I think we were, we were just speaking to Mr. Williams, Mr. Dines, and I, I mean, Mr. Kendrick and I, and I'll ask Mr. Dines as well. Like, we just switched over to a newer transcription system like a year or so ago? Was that Chris or?
I believe so. They used to have a little recorder, and they would take that recorder, and then that's what they would make a file out of and send to, just whatever the transcription company is called. I can't remember their name. But at this point, the YouTube, Jeff, because that from there, a lot of times, they will listen to the YouTube and collect their meeting minutes from-
Well, and tha- and that's a good point, too. So how long is the YouTube videos, uh, how long do they stay out there? I mean, they're, you can go archive those for a while, right? I mean, they're gonna, they're, they're not going away.
Yeah, there's no limit.
Okay. So if there's any question, we can always go look at ourselves on the internet.
Is, is there any cost dri- derivatives, derivatives from one to the other? I mean, would you save more if we summarized it?
I would think if you wanted to have things in totality, that, that YouTube recording would be really good because it comes directly from the sound system to our engineer over there in the back of the room. So, even if you may have some instances where something says it's inaudible, that usually gets everything. It helps immensely when everyone is speaking directly into the microphone. And it might have come up with a conversation that someone might have been talking to someone and it heard something, and that's why it said inaudible conversation going on. But normally, if everyone is speaking directly to the microphone, it works the best, and it should pick up everything through the YouTube.
Yeah, I really like that we're keeping the YouTube videos up and, and, and looking at them, because I've done it myself, going back and taking a look at things. But I, I would like to come back to that question of, do we have an idea what the cost would be if we got away from the verbatim and had someone summarize a, a few short pages of the results of the meeting, actions, decisions, votes, et cetera.
I'm not sure what they pay for that service. We'd have to ask Ms. Fish.
So-
She would know from administration.
So I would certainly concur that I would prefer to have a summary, a brief summary of what went on in the meeting rather than verbatim. But I know that to do that, you probably have to have a staff member out of the planning office to actually do that.
Well, there, there may be a new
transcriber. So, I can live either way. It's just, what's, what's easiest? What's the least expensive for the county?
Go ahead.
I mean, uh, uh, it's practical compromise might be just the way you, the way you state what, what it is. I mean, it's, it's, it's typed out supposedly from the recording verbatim, but we make a disclaimer simply that this is a, uh, this is a, a summary, or I believe to be a true and accurate summary of what was stated at the meeting. Just a simple disclaimer can undo the burden of, you know, you being quoted back to you in a court at some point in time, right?
Sometimes it's good for us to go back and take a look at what the summary of the discussion was and summary of the decisions, and not have to read through or watch two hours of us debating things, or read through 40 pages worth of verbatim to find the one line that says, "Oh yeah, we changed that CIP item from a four to a three."
It's gonna be a lot of work to summarize.
Yes, it, it, I, I'm not saying this is easy. Uh, that's why maybe, maybe we get a, a rough cost estimate and readdress this another time.
So would it be possible to look into what is in the art of the possible to determine what we could do moving forward to potentially modify it to, to a s- more simplistic form of, of meeting minutes? Is that something we could look into? Just to, you know, as a takeaway from this action this evening? That sounds good. Alright, well, given that we have the, uh, is that good with everybody? We'll look into what's possible. We'll come back next week and talk about it next month?
Yes, yeah, I fully support.
Okay.
Yes. Um, but it does bring to mind the fact that there is no public journalism really anymore. You know, and there's things going and there'll be things happening faster, I believe, that has public interests that, um, I forget, have a summary of a summary available to the public on the county website or the King George website. Top level, you know, we met, we voted, we recommended. Um, because, you know, I get questions about, you know, the next day, what happened at the meeting, what happened. Um, and I've been trying to think about how to fill that gap. Either have a journalist or, you know, provide, uh, plain vanilla. It's, it's a thought, and it's something we can look into. I'd appreciate that.
So we will take that for action. We'll add it maybe to the agenda next time, looking at what's, um, what we can come up with for, um, an assessment of alternatives for, for the next time. And for now, we still do have two that we probably don't have much we can do with as they are. So I'll ask if there's any additional comments, questions, concerns about the May 14th, 2024 minutes. If you could please let us know which those, uh, which pages those may reside on, what the actual issue is. We'll work to correct those and move forward. If not, um, we will ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the May Planning Commission meeting notes.
Alright, May 14th minute, uh, motion has been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made in second and all in favor? Opposed abstentions. One abstention, Mr. Palavoto. Alright, on to the June 11th, 2024, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, same thing. If there's anybody who has any questions, concerns, comments about the, uh, meeting minutes, please note the page number and the actual content. We'll work to correct those, and we will look to move forward. Unless there's no comments, we will-
I, I do, uh, have a request to please amend the, um, in the page one where it says commissioners present, um, please amend it to show that I attended that meeting. And then on page five of six, that I also voted aye in favor of the public hearing. I think it was one of those inaudible hand raised moments, and it didn't get recorded.
Any additional comments? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June 11th, uh, meeting as amended.
Chairman, I move that the, um, meeting minutes from June 11th be approved as amended during our discussion.
Alright, motion's been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second and all in favor? Two, three, four, five, six. Opposed abstentions. One, two, three abstentions are Mr. Nicely, Mr. Parker, and Mr. Palavoto. I was not here. I'm assuming Mr. Nicely was not here, and Mr. Palavoto was not yet a member of the board. Alright, so that moves us on to our, uh, next item on the agenda. Thank you all. Um, Community Planning Liaison Officer, Naval Sport Facility South Potomac Daugher, Mr. Adam Lynch. Do we have Mr. Lynch online?
Mr. Chairman.
Alright, well, we will move on to our next item, uh, plan review, which we have done this evening, which moves us on to our next item, which is a public hearing. Addition of Chapter 15 of the King George County Code entitled, entitled Waters, Sewers, and Sewer Disposal by adding Article 5 entitled Fats, Oils, and Greases. Sounds a lot like my diet. Matt, please take it from, uh, here. Take your floor. It is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, Matt Smolik, County Administrator. So, in my, I've been here 11 weeks. One thing that, um, Mr. Rosavi has been looking at, a- after he kind of got me ready to, to take over as a county administrator, was to focus on the service authority. Fats, oils, and greases. This is something that has never been regulated before in King George County. So these fats, oils, and greases are being dumped into the, the public sanitary sewer system and are wreaking havoc on our aging systems. And to, to go out there and to, to see some of the videos of, of some of the pipes that are, are clogged up, see what is coming out of and what the, it's trying to get digested. It's not working. So, the, the proposed ordinance amend, uh, amendment before you tonight is to, uh, add Chapter 15, Article 5, Fats, Fats, Oils, and Grease to the county code. Now, we've, we've talked about this in, in my memo. The Board of Supervisors, there's a provision in state code where they can enact a, an emergency ordinance. At the, it was the July meeting, the, the Board of Directors, and then the Board of Supervisors both heard this. The Board of Supervisors enacted that specific section in state code to put the emergency ordinance in place for a period of 60 days. At the request of the county attorney, it was, uh, we felt it was the safest to hold a public hearing at both the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, um, in order to receive any public comments on this new ordinance. We understand that this is something new in King George County. So what we've been doing, we've been, we've made contact with, I want to say, I have not been directly involved. I think it's 65 plus or minus businesses. Now, a good question was asked, or, and I've been talking to Mr. Valentine, does this apply to me? So this applies to anybody, any, really focusing on the businesses, the restaurants, car washes, dry cleaners. Those are your three biggest, and just not in King George, across the Commonwealth, no matter where you're at. These are, are, are three different business types that can wreak havoc by dumping fats, oils, and greases, uh, into, into a sanitary sewer system. So if you're in a private system, it does not apply to you. If you are on the public system and you're in one of these categories, automobile repair also. A lot of people like to dump paint down, uh, down the drain. So we are trying to prevent this and trying to look out for King George citizens to, how, how to best take care of our aging system and how to replace that. So this emergency ordinance was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. The public hearing is before you tonight. We've already made contact with these 60-plus, 65-plus businesses. We are holding a town hall meeting here in this boardroom. Note, letters were sent out to them to educate. That's our goal, is to educate. And, and the word's getting around. We're already getting the phone calls, "Hey, you haven't visited me yet, but I think you will be coming." So the restaurants are talking to each other. Some of these, uh, the businesses have, have, they've never been monitored. So through no fault of their own, nobody's ever told them, "This is what you need to do." So we're working in conjunction with our, our Public Utilities Department and our Building Department, and we've actually hired an individual, um, a, a fog inspector. He started, I think it was last Monday. And his job is to, to go out and inspect and to educate folks and to create the database. Uh, the county where the, the service authority purchased new software to, to help monitor, to track. And it, it's also there to help the business owners keep track of and how to get individuals to come out and pump this grease. There's a business. Uh, you know, companies will come out and pump this grease. I know I worked with one in another locality. They made, uh, fuel for, for ships out of it. So, so there is a, it is, it is a reusable commodity. So the ordinance before you tonight, uh, we looked at the, the local code, Chapter 15, there was Article 1 through 4. Um, the fats, oils, and grease is going to be added as Article 5 of Chapter 15. It's pretty self-explanatory why we're doing it, a definition. Um, a- as you go through, this is, this has been a public document, uh, for, for 30-plus days now. It's been in the public realm at the BOD and Board of Supervisors. Now it's before you tonight. I, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions from the Planning Commission. Uh, I know we're gonna hold a, hold a public hearing on this. I'll do my best to answer any questions. I'm, I have not been directly involved in the implementation of this, but as a county administrator, I know what's going on. I know how this could impact development, but I know what it will do to, to an aging system. So, um, that's all I have for my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, you know, at, either now or after you hold the public hearing.
Are you getting any pushback from businesses other than restaurants saying they didn't realize it applied to them?
You know, to the best of my knowledge, is I, I, I believe those 60-plus are really focused on the restaurants, car washes, the dry cleaners.
Yeah, it's-
You know, e- even your grocery stores. If they have a kitchen, if they're frying chicken and all that, that can easily go down the drain.
Yeah, that one I got. But when I, when I read this, and maybe this is just my naivety, but when I read it, I immediately zoomed in on food preparation. It, it didn't occur to me that you were looking at like automotive grease or, you know, residue out of a car wash or anything like that. So, the only suggestion I might make in, under section or Part A is that you put in parentheses, including car washes, automotive repair shops, that kind of stuff is just an example.
Yeah, Mr. Kendrick, I, you know, I would, whenever you write code, if it's specific like that, and there is a major offender, they're gonna point to that code section and says, "I was not called out. It doesn't apply to me."
But then how does someone come back to you and say that it doesn't apply to me? They have no recourse-
Right.
To go back and say, "No, you're picking on me. I don't produce that much. Where in your regulation does it say that, that I've gotta do it, but my neighbor who fries chicken every day, and I know they, you know, put their stuff down, that, down the drain, is dumping more grease into the county water system than I am?"
Sure. And, and, and if the Planning Commission would like to add amendments, I, I'll be glad to take them to the Board of Directors and the Board of Supervisors. That, that is, you know, typically, the Planning Commission is here for land use. That's what the, the Planning Commission is charged with, land use. The county attorney recommended we bring it to you as a safeguard measure, as an extra added layer of protection by trying to get information from the public hearing. So if you believe there is a land use issue in here, by all means, that is every bit in your right as a Planning Commission member to bring it up, and staff will put it forward, uh, at the, the public hearing scheduled at the August 20th, Board of Supervisors meeting.
I, I do think that we have the opportunity sometimes to refine things before they take the next step. And I do have some questions about this that don't necessarily pertain to land use, but businesses in particular. Uh, these systems aren't new, so were they not previously regulated by the, the Health Department or some other, um-
Health Department regulates private. The Health Department does not regulate our, our public systems. That's monitored by DEQ.
So when a restaurant opens and they have, uh, these grease vats, I mean, like I said, they've been around. Many restaurants already have them. Um, that's not regulated by anybody already?
It was not regulated prior to the enactment of this emergency ordinance.
Okay. Um-
And I think that's where, how we got into the situation of our, our, the, the current condition of our sanitary sewer, or our sanitary, or wastewater treatment plants.
So I want you to know, I'm 100% behind this.
Yeah.
I just think that we need to have the best version of it and not have any, um, misunderstandings. Um, my questions are like small businesses, breweries, the food truck that serves just coffee. Um, you know, how are they gonna be regulated based on, uh, you're saying it's anywhere, even a commissary that, that holds food in storage? So the food bank, who doesn't cook any food?
Did I, did I, did I say it was a comment?
I, I believe part of it said that any, that the definition of the food, what's the F?
FSCs.
FSCs, one of the definition is, is a commissary, which is a place that just stores food.
Yeah.
And so to me, that doesn't make sense that a place that is just storing food is gonna have to purchase this equipment. And I'm not sure if you know the answer, but how much does it cost to put a system like this in place?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that.
And it's not necessarily fair for a, uh, lady down the street that sells bread at the farmer's market to have to put in cost prohibitive equipment if she's baking bread. And baking was one of the things that requires this system. So I just think that it needs to be, um, you know, you've got, some of the criteria is, uh, inspecting it when it gets to a certain level. Some of the criteria is a minimum of 90 days, and so you've got these two different thresholds. Um, is it based on use or is it based on time? I mean, every business is different.
Are, are, are you looking for-
I was, I was asking you to maybe, uh, have some solutions to how this is gonna be enacted, um, and how they're gonna-
So I, I think the first time you enact any ordinance in a, in a, in a county, in a locality, I'm not sure, I'm not certain there's been one that, one's been 100% perfect out of the gate. When you write a new zoning ordinance, you can't write a zoning ordinance for every situation. You do the best that you can. This is the, the first attempt at this is, is as far as trying to get this under control. So there may be things that may come up as questions. That's why state code allows us to go back and, and amend code. If there's something that is not working, people can bring issues up to the Planning Commission, to the Board of Supervisors to come back and change these items. That's the great part about state code. Whatever we set in stone, you know, tonight at the Planning Commission as your recommendation and what the Board of Supervisors will ultimately approve, that's not set in stone. That's the great part about, you know, local government. You can change things.
And, and Matt, I'm assuming that this, this didn't come out of thin air. This, this language has to be based upon state code and-
Hampton Roads Sanitation District, they're really the front runners in the state.
Okay.
They're, they're the ones leading the charge on the fats, oils, and greases. This, I know our staff has been working hand in hand with the HRSD staff to, to work on what language, what worked for you guys. They've been doing this for years. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. Let's follow what's working. Let them, you know, find some of the kinks. And what works for Hampton Roads may not be the best for King George, but we can come back and change it if, if things aren't working.
Would you consider some sort of a waiver process then for businesses that, you know, the manager, that's the other thing is, just some, uh, refining of the document. Uh, there was, uh, in the maintenance section, it refers to the general manager, but I don't know if that was something that was defined anywhere in the document that I could find. So I, I think that general manager who has the authority-
Of the service authority.
Okay, so I think that needs to be defined, because I was the general manager of a business, and that doesn't necessarily mean that that's who you're referring to. Um, and then the only thing that I think maybe could use some refinement is where it says that an employee certified has to be on site at all-
Which section? Which section?
Section 15 dash 170E, an employee certified onsite at all times. That's, that's way too vague. I mean, are you talking 24/7? That, or when the business is operational, or when cooking is in progress? And what's the cost of the training to certify that individual?
Okay.
To be re-certified.
Yeah. So again, some of our, I'm not talking about our, our big, um, franchises. I'm talking about our local people.
And I, and I wish, ma'am, I wish I had these questions as soon as you guys got the packet, so that I could have had some answers for you. I always encourage planning commissioners to engage with staff prior to a public hearing and a discussion, so that I can, I, I don't like to say, "I don't know," or "I'll have to look into that." Um, I, you know, I, I always welcome communication and, you know, with, we got two new staff members coming to the Planning Department, two very seasoned individuals. I encourage that communication. Whenever you get this and you read it, if there's questions, pick up the phone and call me, because I don't like, I wish I had every single answer for you, ma'am, but I don't right now, just because, A, I have been working intently on this, and these are some very good points. Um, and, and, and I'm, I'm taking them apart. And if, if the Planning Commission would like to take these as amendments to the board, I'll be happy to, to amend this with the Planning Commission. You know, if it, if it's the will of this board, of this commission, I'll be happy to include those in, in this.
Thank you, Supervisor. This is, this is pro forma. Our decision for us is to, a or nay, to holding a public hearing?
Well, you're, you're going to hold a public hearing.
That's gonna happen anyway.
That's gonna happen now.
And do we need to vote on that?
Yes, yes.
Then, virtually pro forma, let's-
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can amend it. Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, I, I agree with you 100% that nothing is ever perfect, and we revise stuff in here all the time. And I recognize this has got nothing to do with land use or that kind of thing that we normally look at. But when something's sent by the, this body, I assume that we can make comments and recommendations. And this is already out into the public. It's already being used, right? You, you hired a fog administrator-
There, there is a gr- we, there was a grace period. If you go back and watch the board, there was a grace period for, for educational purposes. We're not gonna go out and ding the businesses on day one. No, sir.
So-
So we're, we're in the education phase right now of this new ordinance.
Oh, and I will be the first to admit that I don't know much about fog periods. So, we wouldn't be the body that would be trying to nitpick this. We simply read it and made some comments-
Absolutely.
Some suggestions. So whoever's a responsibility it is or not, you know, has the knowledge base to write this, we're just making comments to them. And, and things that come before me sitting on this board in the future, that's the way I'll approach it.
And that's the way it should be, absolutely.
Imagine it applies to abattoirs and small farm, um, you know, activities or-
Do we, do we, I don't know if we, do we allow slaughterhouses in the county? I don't, I did not think those were perma- I'd have to check. I, I haven't memorized the zoning ordinance yet, but I, I don't know if, is that a permitted use in the county? Is it? Abattoir, yeah, meat processing.
Yes.
Yes. Meat processing is, is, and I'm, has meat processing defined as different from a slaughterhouse? Meat processing with onsite and offsite slaughter is typically two different uses. I know guy, I've written a code like that where there's-
I have been memorized our ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's actually, there can be, uh, meat processing with onsite or offsite slaughter. Those, those are two very different uses.
As you know, there's tallow producers and fog producers, and not likely to be on the system.
Correct.
Um, and secondarily, um, I need to do my homework and see if there's a land application of fogs, industrial and agricultural. But I, I'm, I know there is meat processing- of fogs, industrial and agricultural. But I, I'm, I know there is meat processing occurring in the county. I know it's a permitted use, so sir.
I believe it's permitted by special section only, but it is though an option, although onsite killing is not a permitted use.
Yeah, that's my work ethic. Thank you.
So if we have additional comments after we read through this, given your, given your feedback here, how, what's the appropriate method for us to give you comments?
The public hearing is scheduled for August 20th at the board of supervisors meeting. So the, the, we advertise this concurrently because state code only allows the emergency ordinance to be in place for 66 zero days.
So do we hold and come as a member of the public and make comments on this? Or do you want us to send you written specific comments?
I would encourage just comments to be written. Um, we, we typically don't like to have members of the planning commission go speak before the board of supervisors.
That was what I, that was my first reaction.
And, and one thing I, I, I caution you on, if whatever the, the board recommends, we can't receive comments after that vote because not all the members voted on what you may comment on.
Correct.
So any comments or corrections, amendments need to be voted on and vetted by this planning commission tonight.
So let's, um, let's, if we can, let's, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Um, let's, let's get that, let's do that formality and get it out, get it out of the way. Um, so at this point, I'm going to open up the floor for a public hearing, um, on addition to chapter 15 of the King George County Code entitled Water Sewers and Sewage Disposal by adding Article Five entitled Fats, Oils and Greases. Um, and at this point, if there's any member of the public that'd like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I'm not sure if there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak to it. If there are, please do so. Seeing as there are none, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dunn. Is there anybody out in the ether that would like to speak to this?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So let's, uh, having no comments either here or online, I'm going to now officially close this public comment period. Public comment period is now closed. Turn it back to the planning commission for additional discussion and wait forward. Okay. What do we want to do folks?
Yeah, I guess at this point, I'm not, I'm not prepared to give line by line, section by section comments back on this. So I guess what I may, just my suggestion is what I will probably do is send my comments back to my supervisor and send them via that process rather than the public comments. And my, my comments in general are going to be defining exactly who this is applicable to. Cause as I scan through the document, it almost always it's FSCs, 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 food service establishments. Yet tonight is the first time it even came to my attention that this might be applicable to other grease producers such as car washes and automotive facilities. Nowhere in this document was that discussed. So I think a clearer definition is my biggest concern. And I will pass that to my supervisor.
Yeah, I would certainly second that comment, but I'm perfectly happy if we just put it in our notes and send it as the, you know, whatever our normal monthly response to the county is to the board of supervisors. I mean, that's my biggest issue is that, and like I said, maybe my nevete, you know, caused me not to pick up on it, but I didn't pick up on it that it applied to anything other than food service establishments. So.
I would say that I, I'm really for the spirit of this. I mean, I, we need this. I just don't think, um, we've pulled enough threads yet to figure out how it's going to affect, um, you know, our businesses and whether or not this is the best version of it. I'm absolutely strongly encouraging us to pursue a management of, of FOG. I just, um, I want us to know before we say that this is a good thing, that we know that it's going to be a good thing and, and it's going to be, uh, fair and, um, not going to put some of our small businesses in a position where they can no longer function.
I, I agree with that. Um, um, with everything you said and, and, and other, well, the two colleagues as well. Um, but this is just a general comment for me is it feels like this is just a step that prevents the, the enabler, which is we need a new, we need a, a new system. So this is just a measure that, that's kind of putting a Band-Aid or a, a, a somewhat of a small stop to what we really need to be, uh, addressing. So that's just my comment.
If, if I'm understanding, um, correctly, so this ordinance was adopted on the 16th of July. Today is the 13th of August. Our next meeting would be on the 10th of September. So we would be coming up on the 60-day window, closing of that 60-day window pretty closely if we, if we deferred this. Is that correct, Matt?
I'm sorry. I didn't have my calendar and I was, I was talking about another issue. Can you repeat that?
No, I was, I was saying that so this, this, this was adopted, um, the emergency ordinance was adopted on the 16th of July. Today's the 13th of August. And if we were to divert, uh, defer it rather, it would be the 10th of September, which would be towards the close of the 60-day window. You said it's a 60-day window.
And then the board of supervisors would have to adopt it after you, within that 60-day window.
So it would be then outside of.
That is correct.
Okay.
The issue is they're going to adopt it or not next Tuesday.
Correct. And that's, that's, yes, just due to the schedules and public hearing requirements.
Could you just perhaps summarize a little bit more about the, the outreach that was made to the 65 or so potential?
So, so, so Mr. Fox, again, I, I was not, I was involved. I'm not part of the service authority. So this is really a, you know, a service authority initiative. And this is something that they've been working on. I just wanted to kind of reiterate, this is something that our service authority has been working on with other professionals who do this day in, day out across the Commonwealth for the last eight to 10 weeks. So that, just, just rest assured, this is not a fly by the seat of your pants initiative. This is something that we've looked at. This has been drafted a couple of times. You know, it was presented at the board of directors meeting on, on, on July 16th, discussed. I don't think there were any public comments. There were no public comments. Nobody came to speak about it at that time. So the, the outreach that's going out, they were, they were letters and I know some of the individuals at the county, not myself personally, have personally visited these restaurants and used pry bars to, to, to find and, and open up some of these grease containers because that's the condition that they're in. Several of our wastewater treatment plants are under consent order by Department of Environmental Quality right now with severe fines on them. So we are working very intently with DEQ. We have an emergency meeting with DEQ staff at the end of this month to come down to show them what we're doing in order to prevent these fines upwards of, I want to say 32.5 a day that King George could be fined. So we are doing everything in our power to show DEQ that we're taking the steps to, to take care of our sanitary system that has been neglected for so many years.
So I'm sorry, I, I commend what you're doing wholeheartedly and I personally think this is a, it's a sort of a glaring omission. I had no idea we didn't have this sort of thing, uh, that are in hand. So I'm very supportive of the, of the effort. Uh, I just want to make sure that those that'll be affected, particularly the small independent restaurateurs in the county have adequate time and ability to digest the impact of this in advance.
Let me get my, I'm going to get my, I'm going to get my laptop real quick.
So given what we're now hearing, I'm fine with recommending that, because, because I agree, this is a long overdue and I didn't realize we didn't have some.
I didn't, I didn't know.
So I'm, I'm fine with, for the sake of staying clean with the state as well as correcting the bulk of this problem, that we recommend to the, to the board of supervisors that we go ahead and we enact this, you know, do everything we have to do, the public hearing and, you know, make it not an emergency action, but make it a, you know, permanent action. But then with the recommendation that they review it to address some comments that, that we're now getting, that will, may come out of the public hearing when it occurs and do an amendment in not too distant future. I mean, I agree wholeheartedly. Nothing is ever perfect, but right out of the chute. This goes a long way to addressing the bulk of the problem.
Right.
So I'm fine with that part.
This amendment has already been put on the books in an emergency purpose the last 30 days, right?
That is correct.
And there's been no public outcry or pushback?
No, sir.
So I.
We haven't received, I haven't received anything as a county administrator. No business is calling me. And, and, and for the record, and I'm looking at my, what, nine ambassadors up here. So the, and, and for anybody watching, the FOG ordinance town hall will be Tuesday, August 27th, here in the boardroom, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. So we, we've made this announcement. I'm making it again. We're going to say it again and again. We're going to hold these town halls to educate people. Like I said, we're out there meeting with them, giving them letters, meeting with them. If nobody comes to this town hall to learn about it, I, I can't.
Restaurateurs in the county specifically been invited so that they know?
Yes, yes.
Because some of them might not otherwise just be even aware that this is going on, right?
And we're going to have the, the board of directors here. We're going to have our, our FOG inspector. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be a very education and it's all about education because I'm, I'm, you know, hearing from the plant, planning commissioners, I didn't know about this. A lot of people didn't know about it. So, so, so this is something new. So that's why there was a grace period, no fines enacted.
And we are being fined by the state?
No, potentially, we could be.
Because we're dumping contaminated wastewater into the state system or the rivers or whatever.
Because our wastewater treatment facilities are failing due to the fats, oils and greases that are being dumped in there by consumer, by, by the businesses.
We don't have a choice on this tonight.
Could you, could you please go over your dates again? Cause I thought I heard that they're, that the board of supervisors are going to vote this in on the 20th.
Next week.
The 20th is the.
But then we're going to hold a town hall meeting seven days after.
It's just to educate. The, the ordinance is already enacted.
Right.
The emergency ordinance is already on the books. It was on the books where the board of supervisors had three affirmative votes the night of, uh, the 16th of August. So the emergency ordinance is on the book. We're going back, following state code, taking a precautionary measure, coming to the planning commission, going to the board of supervisors on the 20th to, to check that box with state code. And then for further education, we're going seven days later to educate our business owners. This is what we just adopted. If you haven't already contacted us in the last 60 days.
You, you mentioned that, correct me if I'm wrong, that something like this is, is in effect currently in Hampton Roads area or?
That's correct.
Is it? Yes. Uh, is something like this, were, were this verbatim also in effect in much smaller municipalities as far as?
I came from New Kent with, which is 5,000 people smaller. And we had a state of the art wastewater treatment plant. And this was, this was all standard practice.
Okay. So.
It's, it's, this is standard practice in the development world.
Right. And, and I think too, just to frame it a little bit more, like what is it? It's less than, it's less than 20% of the population is on public.
I, 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 I don't quote me, please. I, I don't know the exact.
It's a, it's a, it's, uh, it's 80 plus percent of King George County is on well and septic.
That, that, I mean, that, those numbers would, if, if I were to take a guess, that's, that's probably pretty close. Yes, sir.
But I mean, they, the bottom line, they shouldn't be dumping it, right? So I mean, I think this is, this is the, this is the incentivization that you, you can't, you can't dump it in there and ruin it for the rest of us. I, I'm with Mr. Kendrick. I would prefer to just go ahead and get it. We can fix it after the fact. We can submit it over with a recommendation for approval with comments. Um, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm afraid if we sit here and polish the apple, we'll be here all night. And I don't know we'll ever come to a consensus on it. But I believe we can just send it over with comments and say, yeah, I think we can use approval, uh, recommend for approval with inclusion of automotive facilities, car washes, et cetera. And, and we can move it along. I mean, unless, unless y'all tell me otherwise.
Take a motion.
I didn't make that.
I know, I know.
But, but it's, 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 um, so unless there's, I mean, do we, do we want to, do we want to banter it about anymore or?
I think they mean, I think they're bringing that to us because if it's cost prohibitive, it affects what you can do with your property. If you have commercial property, you want to open a restaurant, maybe you bought it last year, but this year it'll cost you $100,000 more to be your restaurant and effectively affected that. So I think that's why I brought it to us. I'm, I'm not saying I don't think that we should do this, but I think, um, our comments are, are needed and necessary to be included in that and some of the prospect of land use.
That, that, Mr. Palavota makes a good point. So from a, from a cost standpoint, this in theory shouldn't be an incurred cost, correct? I mean, it should be the, the, the business establishment operating within the parameters of what they should be doing to start with, right?
Every locality I've worked in, yes. It's the cost of doing business. It's nothing above and beyond than what a business should be doing bare bones anyway.
Okay.
But that's not to say that all of our restaurants in this county have these facilities and they're going to incur a cost to come in compliance. I know of at least one specifically that have been told that they've talked to people and they do not have anything like this in their restaurant. I'm not going to put them on the record here on, on.
Are they on the public system?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that could be, you know, an issue if, if there's nobody, if they don't have these systems and they are dumping grease down the drains, that's why our, our water treatment facilities are failing.
Right. So, so, so we can look at that one or two ways. It could cost the company.
Absolutely.
It's going to cost the rest of us money to fix it, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Please don't take my, my feedback here as not being in support of this. I think it really needs to be, to, needs to be done to protect our systems and to protect the county from the state DEQ people from, from really coming at us, right? We will incur more county cost fixing this problem within the system. But there's just some clarifications that I think need to be occurred. So people understand who it's applicable to and who it's not. And, uh, I'll, I'll make that on the side to the board of supervisors. But I fully support passing this on and letting the board supervisors deal with this.
Thank you, sir. And, and Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I, just, just for the record, the public hearing was opened and closed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
So yeah, like I said before, I totally support this measure. And if we were just talking about restaurants that are open seven days a week frying wings, I would say it's a no-brainer. Um, but you know, are, are we going to put in a, uh, one of these containment systems at the Sealston Sports Complex for the concession stand? Are we going to put one, uh, at the high school for the concession stand? Are we going to put one at the community center for, for the kitchen that we have there? You know, does it matter if a church is only using their kitchen one day a week? Uh, so that's all I'm saying is, is should we have some waivers? Should we have some processes where we discriminate against, um, you know, somebody who's doing an activity that, that might have a lower threshold versus one that's, like I said, cooking chicken wings and dumping it without any kind of system? I think that there should be some kind of middle ground and this document doesn't really show where that threshold is.
Does your new FOG administrator have the discretion to, or are there parameters under which that individual works to cite up, you know, yes or no, they need it or?
Seven days on the job. I, we're still.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's still, there's still an orientation.
Got it. Correct. Thank you all for your comments. I appreciate this. And I think this is the right direction for King George as a community. So thank you for all your comments. I appreciate everything.
We're at that critical juncture. Somebody want to?
I, I would like to make a motion that we approve this. And I would just hope that those people who might be affected by it, um, would have the chance to, um, talk about their specific businesses and how it's going to affect them and, and whether or not there are other options available to them, um, so that it's not going to prohibit them from doing good business in our county.
Interesting.
So what are exactly are we supposed to provide to the board of supervisors? A recommendation for finalizing this code or?
I believe it's the, the, the ask is for a vote to approve this emergency ordinance as a permanent ordinance, correct? And forward along to them for approval and incorporation into the King George County ordinance book.
So.
Yeah. Unfortunately, that's a different threshold.
I would move that we forward.
Let's let Mr., I think Mr. Kendrick wants to.
Yeah. I would, I would, I would move that we forward, get the name correctly, the King George County Code, Chapter 12, Article Five, Fats and Oil and Grease, um, ordinance to the board of supervisors recommending approval. No. 15. I'm, pardon me, I misspoke. So we'll start over then. Um, I move that we forward to the board of supervisors a recommendation to approve and finalize the King George County Code, Chapter 15, Article Five. The King George County Code, chapter fifteen, article five, fats and oil and grease ordinance. With the recommendation that in future iterations. That they consider clarifying the applicability to non. Um. Let me find the right. Name. Um.
Food service establishment?
Yeah, food service establishments. Um. Yeah. As well as. Um. Well, is considering an exception for. Those. Food establishments that do not operate on a full-time basis and would have minimum impact on. The sanitary sewer system.
All right, that, that was a motion. And motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Uh, nays and abstentions. Palavota stains, uh, first day on the job. All right, motion passes. Thank you all. Lucy, did you capture all that correctly? There we go. All right. It was a lot. It was a mouthful. Okay. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Always, uh, always, uh, good discussion. Feel like we came through that. Uh, next item on the agenda is old business, we have none, new business, we have none, director's report, we have none of that tonight either, old business, we have none, which brings us to. The favorite part of the evening, let's.
Two minute pause.
Yes, sir.
As a direct, so I'm, I'm serving as the community development director right now, the zoning administrator and the subdivision agent also. I am happy to report that. I have hired a, a new community development director and a new zoning administrator for King George County. Both of which will be starting Monday, August nineteenth. Uh, Kelly La Duke comes uh to King George County from, from New Kent. I worked with her for ten years. She's been in New Kent for, I think, nineteen years, about twenty-three years planning experience. Mr. Kenny Vaughn. Also got him from New Kent County. I believe he's moving to King George. Um, Mr. Vaughn is a certified zoning administrator, about twenty-four years' experience. So two individuals who know planning commission very well and I've worked with for ten years. I have a very good working relationship with them. Um, I will be introducing them at the, at the, the next board meeting, at which time I'll be appointing Kenny as the zoning administrator and Kelly as the subdivision agent. But we've also hired a new uh front desk person, a permit technician, and a new building inspector in community development. So um where we had six vacancies, you know, a few weeks back, we've got one left and I've got a plan for that. Um, so, so yes, community development is nearly fully staffed with very well, very trained employees and. Very, you know, versed to, you know, bringing. Large rezonings, exceptions of tax amendments to the planning commission. And then, you know, my comment earlier was the communication back and forth. I started my career twenty-two years ago as an entry level planner for James City County. The, you know, the one, as that red light was on on the camera, the one thing that I dreaded was getting comments that. Planning commissioners had for all week and they never reached out to me. And it was a comment that I knew I could answer if I had time to research it. So I just encourage you with the new staff members coming on to, to, to have the communication back and forth with them. When you get your packet, look at it, read it, I know you do. And if you have comments, pick up the phone and give them a call. Something may be very simple, but I, you know, I. Whenever we're on camera, whenever things are recorded, if it's a back and forth, staff knows what they're doing. You asked me questions tonight. I know what I'm doing. I just was not well versed in this and I like to have questions or I like to have responses to questions instead of I don't know. As do Kelly and Kenny. So I would encourage that with, you know, with this commission, any board and commission, you know, as that relates to any of the staff members here at King George County. I know as a staff member, I welcome uh when a phone call comes from a planning commissioner or a board member says, hey, Matt, I've got a question. I love that. I, I love taking that call and, and having that conversation, so I encourage you all to do it and I think the new staff members will work very well with this commission. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Matt. Who's the economic development personnel? Do we have one or?
Yeah, it's me too.
That's you too?
Yes, sir.
Nice. Like that old I Love Lucy episode. All right, excellent. All right, well, uh, thank you. Thank you all. Uh, again, we're going to. Get to that fun part of the night where I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion's been made. If we're here a second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Have a great evening.